Village of Roscoe Boarding Meeting, Tuesday, July sixteenth, six thirty. Shall we all sign for the Pledge of Legions? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of British England, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Fats?
Yeah.
Simon?
Yeah.
Buck?
Here.
Maliko?
Here.
Teddy? Here.
Here.
Yes.
Here. Item one, may I have a motion to approve the minutes from our July second meeting? They didn't get attached. So I
No minutes?
No?
No.
So we were there, but they didn't get attached on there, so nobody is seeing us, can't approve something. But if I'm sorry. Well, will you? Is there a motion to approve your minutes? So.
Sorry.
Right?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Maliko?
Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Public comment, is there anyone wishing to make public comment this evening? Have another chance? President's report, a couple of items this evening. First, I would like to take this opportunity to introduce to you Jeff Smithly, our new code enforcement official or employee. Jeff, would you like to say a few things about yourself?
Twenty minutes, speak twenty minutes. I think I've prepared. I've been, we live in the Ledges, I'm married, I have two children, son and a daughter, and I'm a retired firefighter, so about three years ago, three and a half years ago, I retired, so it's just a really perfect fit for me. A little part-time.
Another fire.
Yeah, yeah, right, it's a different type. So, yeah, that's about it.
How, how many hours a week are you working?
Um, twenty to thirty. So, you know, there's a certain I can't go over, you know, so.
So I've been working more hours in the summer.
Yeah.
And then less than winter, and, uh, thousand hours a year is the maximum for our time. But it'll be sort of down, it'll be sort of offset that way, so it'll be more time in summer, so yeah, twenty to thirty hours in the summer and then the western.
And any benefits?
Nope, hard time.
Working with us, charming folks.
Yeah, that's just that, yeah.
That's a line between you just really.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'd always be happy to make use here, so. Yeah, and email for this Republic too, I suppose, it's codeenforcement@villageofroscoe.com. If you have any complaints or any help events I suppose to, you can send it to those, but, um, we aren't doing that, so. We're on the website.
Right, so, uh, chasing those in heaven, the old ones.
Got lots of kids.
Building.
Also, I see, yeah. And in the.
So we're glad to have you with us.
Yeah.
And, uh, thank you very much for wanting to assist us in keeping Roscoe better looking, better groomed. Uh, secondly, we have with us tonight, uh, two very, very distinguished individuals who commit a great deal of time and energy to a very successful program. I would like to introduce to you past president and current president of the Rockton Roscoe, or is it Roscoe Rockton? Junior.
Well, rest.
Indian.
Roscoe Roscoe.
Okay, I should know. Uh, the Junior Indians, uh, Tackle Football Organization. So we have Mr. Andy West and Mr. Brian Lepierre. Mr. Andy West is, uh, past president and he handed this off to Mr. Brian Lepierre. So, please tell us something about your organization. Friendly folks, you can say that.
We're not named.
You want to start off with, uh, history or present day?
Whatever you wish to.
All right, let's go ahead and start, uh, present day. Should I sing?
Whatever.
I'm kind of a, I like to stand. All right, uh, so, thank you guys for having us, first of all. Um, Carol reached out, uh, reached out to myself and Andy asked us, um, to come in, give you guys a little bit of, uh, information as to, uh, what we do. Uh, our numbers, our, our focus on, on the kids and, uh, packs. So, the primary, uh, purpose of the program is to build character and create self-confidence by empower, by empowering and leading the youth of our, of our, uh, little district, of Roscoe Rockton, our community, uh, through football and cheer. Um, our numbers are a little crazy. Um, so we have the following, for, um, first of all, we have twenty, twenty-plus board members. So, much like you guys, we sit down, there's not one person that makes a decision for, uh, anybody, we all vote on it. That's it, or nix it, uh, go from there. Um, we have seventy-plus coaches for football. Um, we have forty-plus coaches for cheerleading. Um, we have a total of fourteen football teams, uh, just, just tackle football teams, I'll get into this in a second. Um, ranging from ages six to fifteen. Um. We have a total of three hundred and fifty-three tackle football players, two hundred and forty-three cheerleaders. Uh, and then we have what we call, uh, Junior Indian Prep Camp Kids. Uh, we have forty of these, these kids are five, six-year-olds that, uh, are not quite ready for tackle, or, you know, parents are kind of on the board. We bring them out, we let them run some routes, catch some footballs, hit some bags. Um, we, uh, we give them a jersey with the name and their name and number on it, and then that's, uh, their end of season is, uh, during our homecoming, halftime of one of our homecoming games, they get to go on and put, or go out, uh, with massive crowd out there and put on a little flight football show for everybody.
And they are the cutest part of the fall festival, right?
It is, it is absolutely, absolutely hilarious. Uh, for us, so, uh, total kids in the, uh, program, six hundred and forty-one kids. Um. And yeah, um, that I have here, uh, none, none of these numbers matter if we don't have a place to call home. Riverside's been our home for, for, this will be the thirty-four, forty-first year. Um, so we, we look forward to hopefully staying there in another forty-one years. Um. Let's see here, uh, I'd like to thank you guys for allowing us to serve the youth of the community by allowing us to, of course, continue to use Riverside. Um, and I think this, uh, the numbers, the amount of people it takes, your guys' support, this is a, um, a, a proverb that I'm reminded of, it truly takes a village to raise a child. Uh, and this is, this is proof of it, but. That's all there is.
I wanted to add, you're overly modest here. Yeah, the, the sense that you have a program that appeals to so many people, but you also shared with me that your program is a model for other communities thinking of instituting or developing a program like this. So kudos to you on how you do what you do, that you have become a model. And then, secondly, you bring together so many volunteers, so we give you the space, but you have definitely groomed it to be what it is and serve your program and also be an asset to the village. So we greatly appreciate all of the hours that you put in and the attraction of your program, and we are grateful that you call Roscoe home.
And, and just on a side note, um, I had asked Andy, our, our longest-serving member is, uh, been around for fourteen years. Uh, his son is come gone, he's twenty-two, twenty-three years old. Um, he comes out, he paints the fields, he, uh, fits kits for shoulder pads, helmets, uh, you name it, he is, he's willing to help and, um, he, besides Andy, uh, he is the voice of the Junior Indians, uh, you come over here on a Saturday, um, but we were talking over here, we have, normally every Saturday we'll have five games, uh, with the first one starting at nine-thirty, uh, last one starting at seven-thirty, seven-thirty. So we're, we're normally not walking out of there much before ten-thirty on a, a Saturday, ten-thirty at night, so.
And I know you have one ask for all of us, and that's for a drought.
Yeah, yeah.
Because your opening day is August seventeenth, correct?
Yes. Yep.
So if you guys do a non-rand dance.
And you got kitty litter, uh, shock backs, very about to be, big pumps.
So, yes, yeah, so we've been, we've been, we've been in your park, uh, as a user of Riverside Parks since nineteen eighty-two. Uh, in fact, I think there might have been some usage before, but we don't really have a document that says so until, until then. Um, we've certainly appreciated, uh, Troy's himself and his, his team, they keep our field looking like Lambo. Uh, they, they mow it precisely, all the blades of grass look perfect. Um, Sue, you had mentioned that, uh, we'd love to give you guys just an executive summary of maybe some of the financial impact of the park, that's an easy thing, uh, to get to you guys, uh, we'll send it to Carol, she can distribute it. But just to give you an idea, um, we've, we have managed to spend in just capital improvements in the last two years, well over a hundred thousand dollars in the park. Uh, to no cost to the village or to any of its taxpayers, um, which we're, we're very proud of that. Um, the other thing, I don't want to go on all night, but the other thing that we're super proud of, um, is the culture and the people of all, all the folks that Brian just rattled off, the number of coaches. Um, it's well over seventy, it's an army of people that we have to try to manage. Um, as you probably know, if you guys have children, grandchildren, travel sports have become very popular in the last ten years, and we have always held ourselves out as a community base. We do not charge much for football. Um, a full season of football costs three hundred and thirty dollars. That, we call it a two-night stay in a hotel for a travel baseball team. Just the, just the hotel stay, that covers a kid for the entire season. We have enough financial resources because of our local community, uh, uh, business owners and because of our great, uh, fundraising arm, we're able to, um, help kids, help families that can't afford it, three hundred and thirty dollars for football. So no one gets turned away for fin- financial need, ever. Since I've been, I've been around for twelve years, I've never, we've never turned anyone away, which I would want you guys to know that. Uh, lastly is the culture of the, just, just the volunteers and the, and the coaches, there are a number, I can't even put a number on it, but it's way more than twenty of the coaches for us that actually were, were Junior Indians themselves and have grown up through our program, went to Harmony High School, graduated, went out, got educated or got a job, decided to come back to Roscoe and Rockton and start a family, and then give back to the community. Which I think makes me very proud of the community that I live in, and I would want you guys to be proud of that's the community that you're serving to. We think it's a very worthwhile endeavor, and yes, there are parents that complain, and yes, there are coaches that yell and scream and get thrown out of games, but all of that seems to kind of get tamped down. Once, we have, you see the smile on his faces tonight as we're putting the helmet on him for the first time, and they're like this.
They, they get to take it home.
They get to take it home with them, and they're very excited, and all that stuff kind of goes away, and all the work and the toil and the sweat and the swamp water that we have on our field right now. As bad as that might be, we have means and ways of working around it, so we just really wanted to say thank you to you guys. Just answering questions to you.
Thanks for sprucing it up. Working with those companies that it's, it's nice, it looks good.
As I said, we're very, very appreciative of what you do and what you bring to the community, thank you.
With that, I think we need to get back to the field.
Very much.
Thank you.
Going on to pressures report, cash report, and bills. You take a look at your documents. You have before you tonight expenditures totaling uh, wages and payroll, bottom line, uh, totaling seven hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and one dollars and five cents out of the general fund. And further on down, you'll notice that there are two out of the motor fuel fund totaling twenty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. Making expenditures, total expenditures tonight of seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirty cents. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
So moved. Second.
Questions?
I'll be in no way in the link.
Yeah, no on that as well, and do we know when we're going to get the last invoice?
Should be this way, our next one should be, it shouldn't be much longer.
Any others? I'll leave the votes please. Teddy? Yes, Buck?
Yes.
Maliko?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
You also have in your packet a year-to-date revenue and expenditures report. If you look at the bottom line, last pages, you know, you know, uh, page twelve. You will remember that, um, because this report's through May, June, six months, June thirtieth, there are still some revenue sources that are not yet in, as well as some expenditures that we have not made, so, uh, treasurer Olson has indicated, uh, the percentage used, you'll see our bribe. Uh, we would be, we're perfect, everything at fifty percent, but it's not that way. So, if you look at the bottom line, you'll see the general fund revenue, general fund expenditures, and that we will be doing a transfer at the end of the year, when it all shakes out, from the surplus that we have in the general fund to older code, insurance fund. Here. So if you have any specific questions after you have a chance to digest this about individual line items, put it in an email or a text message or drop by and talk about it. Explore some new questions. Uh, going on, item number six. Is there a motion here to increase or amend Chapter one-one-four of Village of Roscoe Code of Ordinances to create a class T-two temporary liquor license type or allowing temporary liquor licenses to be issued to licensees within licensed retail premises located outside the Village of Roscoe?
So moved. Bye.
Babcock?
Yes.
Maliko?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, next item is a new item, and I would kindly request that there be a motion to suspend the rules so that we can discuss and approve part of this or all of this, because of its timely nature.
So moved. Second.
Uh, you have within your packet, um, quite a few illustrations of landscaping work. If you have noticed, across the front of Village Hall and PD, uh, we are in need of a spring cleanup, pruning, weeding, uh, all of those necessary things. So, we sought competitive prices, and you will find, again in your packet, uh, from Crimson Valley, that, uh, for total, and this includes putting plants in the median, and that is explained to us when you enter the parking lot, and you, on the left, the northern most section by the bridge, which is barren, putting some perennials and sprucing that up, because this area posts food trucks as possible entry to the bridge, and it accents village, so putting some plants in there, and then also cleaning up all across the front from that point around, uh, the PD property, so a whole swath across the front of the village. Um, spring cleanup of that mulch, that would be, as I said, pruning things, weeding, uh, removing things that shouldn't, the volunteers, they shouldn't be there. And then a fall cleanup as well. So, that prices out, as you see, at six thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars.
For rendering of the Village Hall, just see.
No, what you see is border park.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This house. I was just first circle right here, you could see.
No, there, there wasn't any.
Same type of plant thing and stuff, but.
Uh, yes, there are some illustrations when you go down of what would be in that median, uh, further on down.
Just, just.
Just the plants, right? Not what it would look like once it was all done. Because, uh, the directive there was to have something that would survive salt and snow piles and abuse and neglect, so trying to find.
They just did a really good job with the cabin part there.
Right.
Just wants to. Yeah.
What, what's the total for both? Um, for the cabin, the cabin is broken down into two sections. Uh, you'll see the rendering of all around the building, and on the plants all around the building, six thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars. And the plants described as the median, if you are in front of the cabin and you are on the sidewalk, and you look to the left, there's that swath of weed that is between the first grassy area and the parking lot, that is the median section. That putting, uh, with the big pop, and you see the rendering of that, of all of the perennials, prices out at, uh, seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars. So making the expenses of one-time expenses of putting in all of these perennials that were chosen because they would survive in that type environment. Uh, fourteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars. The plants are guaranteed for a year, and we could also, whenever called and needed, but we haven't, if this rain continues, at two hundred and fifty dollars visit, uh, they would come out and water everything to keep it alive during the season. So that way we would be able to make sure that they survive, and we don't have to eat, so that needs to do that. So this would be a one-time expense for, uh, border park to get it to look really quite elegant, and.
We don't have the water tank anymore?
So.
Yeah.
Yeah, two hundred and fifty, yeah.
Okay, but in talking with Troy, uh, when we went, went through this, it was his opinion, he would rather have them do it because that then guarantees that plants get replaced, that there would not be this going back and forth, oh, did you water it or not? No, it's dry, they come out, they water it, something dies, they put it back now, and.
First year?
Yes.
But then after that?
After that.
Take care of it?
Right, well, just like you do your own stuff.
Usually these ones, like after a full year, they're pretty established.
Right.
They're not.
So it's two hundred and forty dollars pop to the visit, if, whenever we call. It's not, they're going to come every two days, it's okay, you spend ten days, stuff looks dry, come out and water it. It's on the off-call basis, and I suppose next year, you know, if it's really dry, we're afraid of it, you know, we could have an ongoing contract with them to do again more spring fall cleanup, things that we can't do. All of these places are, are available to do whatever it is you want them to do, whenever you want.
Is there a reason we couldn't just do grass?
Aesthetic blade, uh, you could do grass, it is grass and weed now, just as a book.
But, excuse me.
Probably because it was prairie grass, because that's what originally that park was designed for, was to be more prairie than.
Right?
When we, uh.
It's what the grants were for.
When we did the, uh, parking lot, and that de-mystifying area for a lot of the, the repairs, window replacements, all of that kind of stuff, so it.
Seventy-eight hundred dollars. I guess I'm asking people more. Spend seventy-eight hundred dollars on the median around the building, sixty-four.
So your proposals.
I'm just asking it, what, what people's wanting to do. I have a pulse. Did you have some grant coverage?
No, that's the Boston Street, how about if we, how about if we break this up into two, two sections? Uh, let's first, uh, take a look at Village Hall. Clean up around Village Hall. Everyone okay with that?
Except for, I want somebody to look at the bridge over here, because it's getting massively overgrown, the barricades.
Yes.
Very weathered, we need to get some maintenance done over here as well.
Oh, on River Street?
Yes.
You have a border. We talked about that, we have to change some stuff, well, using the barricades, they want a different signage, that's already ordered.
It's also very overgrown.
Yeah.
Them and stuff, we need to get all that cut back and.
And the flags ever been ordered? Uh, no, uh, you're talking about.
Bridge flights.
No.
Perfect banners.
No, those haven't been ordered yet. Um, let's go back to.
Village Hall is between, right over six thousand.
Six thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars if it's planting in the spring and the fall cleanup. Right?
I'm okay with those. Just in case it's a, all right, take a look at the bridge and if anything you do there, because that's going to be separate.
It's part of the regular, we set like works.
Right.
I did, any other questions or comments? It, breaking this down.
Watering, we don't need to, the watering truck down here.
No, those things are, those things are established. I mean, we should have them put in plus.
And what about the median we're putting in? They still guarantee the plants.
Yes, yeah. Okay. Um, so breaking this into sections, let's just going around, so everyone are, how, let's put it this way. Will someone make a motion to engage Crimson Valley for the spring and fall cleanup at Village Hall and plants in the PD?
So moved.
Wait, we should do the roll call a little bit final first, we were.
Oh, sorry. Okay, thank you. Uh, Babcock?
Yes.
Maliko?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, is there a motion then to employ Crimson Valley to put plants in the median at Village Hall, do the spring and fall cleanup, uh, at cost of six thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars?
So moved. Second.
Ray?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Maliko?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Okay, then taking a look at border park. Uh, preference, doing both places, just doing around the cabin itself? What?
I'll say I really like the median, I'm just wondering if we really need it for that much more. So, it, you were, because you were asking. That's kind of my thought about it, so.
Anyone else?
I think because of how much we've spent making border park look like it does, I, I like this rendering, if we can afford it, I would say you can afford it.
But there's also something we said for economies of scale too, I mean, if we're doing this, you know, for one, you know, they're out there. Do it for both, and then also I think that the hardest, you know, to spend, uh, truck or treat some of the events there, the hardest trip to skate around the, you know, around the parking lot, you know, it's generous, but, eat, gosh, it looks, it looks really nice with, uh, with this, like William said, I mean, my best thing to buy is sort of a premier park in Roscoe, so I think this would fit well.
Is there a concern that that median will, would be trampled? Answer that, but thank you, we have lots of nice plants that people just would walk through, um.
The, the edging one. The, the edging ones are supposed to be pretty trample proof, pretty trample resistant, you could say.
That's.
He's designed it to be fairly resistant around the edges with.
He said those would come back with the abusive, if, uh, snow, ice or snowplow, you know, they come back, that's, I forgot, yes. It's ring with that low. But you would think that, so. People walking, uh, walking into the cabin would do that, but.
Got a million people for truck or treat, thank you.
But move.
Let's do a trial of thirteen hundred. Give or take.
Fourteen.
No, fourteen.
To do both, to do both, to do around, to do around the cabin itself with all of the, the plants that you see. And do realize that the median is highly planted, there are, what did we count, over three hundred specimens in that area? So that's. Well, you, you want it to look full and like it's been there for a while instead of one or two things trying to survive. So yes, there are a lot, there are a lot of plants there. To fill in and make it quite attractive and I thought, I think those sinisiphi gardens, look at that, the, the rose bed and the flower clock. All of the other attributes.
When are we gonna get all this work done? For all of them?
Uh, no, if it's approved, they would be able to start. I think so, it's all tomorrow and yes, on the schedule.
Generally said that the first year we should have some, some blooms the first year, but really the next, over winter, then the next year is when you script that. Sort of deciding to be. It would sound like they'll be colorful a year or two, like the diagram sort of staggered relative to here.
Other questions?
Engage these people on our subdivisions?
Uh, but let's not, let's just do one topic at a time.
I get it, but that's a lot of that's.
Okay, so.
Money we spent there.
Is there someone who will make a motion?
I make a motion.
To, uh, to engage Crimson Valley to do the plantings around the cabin as well as the median?
Yes.
At fourteen thousand, two hundred and ninety two dollars. Is there a second? Well, if there is no second, then it fails, you have no plans.
We, are we going to look at this just two different ones, the, the media and the we're breaking it down or we're doing the whole thing?
You just, if Williams, uh, Williams told us to do both.
I think we should break it down.
Oh, we should say like that, the, the scale.
I know, but it just, it just seems that like people like looks, some people are pretty, the, the one section and then the other section. So without getting a second.
Want to withdraw your motion?
Motion failed, we have new motion failed.
Okay, if that motion failed, so is there a, a new motion?
Sort of have your medium? Yeah, I'd like to motion that we look at the plantings around the, the actual cabin itself and the median cabin separately. There's two offers, they're right.
Uh, two prices, that's true. So your motion is that we employ Crimson Valley to do just the plantings around the cabin itself.
To start with, yeah.
This season.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Sure.
Sock?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Maliko?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes.
So in conclusion. We, you have voted, we will do Village Hall. Full front of Village Hall and do just around the cabin with the renderings, the plantings that you see there. But also if needed for them to come and water those things around the cabin. Two hundred and fifty dollars each time. If needed, but it's crazy as hell. And then we will explore the median for next season. Thank you. Questions and reports, uh, could I ask for? Brandon, give us an update on.
Yep, so, uh, the contractors started back up with work, uh, on Monday. With the prepping, the grading and the shaping of the roadway, obviously we had lots of erosion and washouts, um, from the past storms that we've had. Um, so they've been out there the past couple of days, uh, anticipated the grading and shaping will also carry into Wednesday and possibly Thursday. Um, and then the anticipated paving date is, paving start date is Friday, so this Friday. Um, and Saturday they plan to finish the paving out there. Um, another thing, another topic, obviously there's some standing water on one of the corners, um, we looked into that, um, we actually had to do some survey, um, survey, uh, data gathering and unfortunately it is a stretch of about a hundred and twenty five feet of curb that is dead flat or even back pitched in that area. Um, to the naked eye, it's not something that's easily seen, we had something like two to three inches of fall over that entire stretch. Um, obviously it wasn't as significant of a ponding issue before, um, we really didn't change anything in that area. Um, we established a crown in the roadway to sheet the water to the curb or to the gutters, which is how they're supposed to operate. Um, we're not sure if maybe there wasn't a prominent crown before to shed that water over to that area. Um, but essentially looking into solutions, um. I feel, I know we've talked as a staff internally, um, that we want to explore other contractors to complete the repairs on that. Um, reason being, obviously the, I think it was the last meeting we referred to change order, um, for a lot of re- repair or curb repair work. Um, prices are very high and I am very confident that we can hire a contractor separately, um, to come back and do that work at a cheaper rate. Um, to fix that, um, ponding area. Um, so I actually have a call into another local contractor waiting for a callback, I'm gonna get a handful of contractors hopefully out there, try to get us some pricing to complete that work. If the timeline allows, I think we will, uh, and pricing allows, obviously, um, we will try to get that done this year, but it could potentially be a next year fix. Um, either way, even if we were doing the work this year and we had our current contractor completing those repairs, um, that, you know, it comes at a, obviously a higher cost, um, but it also, we're gonna have to patch the roadway either way. So me personally, I would rather explore a cheaper option than using change order pricing, um, to rectify that situation. So that is where that sits, we know it's an issue, uh, we have gathered the data, uh, we are just trying to get some pricing information, uh, to present to the board. So we will keep exploring that, if for some reason it does carry over, um, into next year. Talking with public works department, we will prioritize that from snow pile and salt standpoint. Because if there is standing water, obviously ice is going to be a hazard, so we will need to take extra project on that. But I'm fairly confident that we, there's contractors in the area that can complete that work in a timely manner this year and still get it done before, uh, the end of the season. But, so we'll, we'll get that pricing and if the pricing isn't favorable and, yeah, we can have Rock Road, our current contractor, come back and do that at a um, a cheaper price and we will explore that option. But for right now, we want them to finish the roadway, get that thing paved. That way we don't have continuous washout erosion, we want to get these residents back in their, um, back in their normal subdivision, so.
Thank you.
Anyone, anything on class debashing yet?
So no, we're anticipating probably the next board meeting actually, uh, going back out to bid for that or trying to get authorization to go out for bid for that. Um, Troy and I, we, we still are talking about whether or not we want to identify those patches all beforehand. Or just talk with contractors, find out what the reason they weren't submitting bids, um, and then, um, hopefully change that, that process. To make it more appealing to bidders. Um, so as of right now, it just, um, we, we've got a lot of season left, we can get that patching done, so hasn't been at the top of our priority list, but it is still a project that we will be looking for before the end of the year.
Thank you. Um, Troy? Is there anything that you wanted to update the college, the board on? Lots of leaks everywhere.
Yeah, just Riverside Park, uh, I was, you know, seeing on our Facebook, we just have it out. Riverside's closed, we are, we do have it open from six to eight, actually, and Andy, Brian are opening it up for their their equipment pickup, but we do have everything blocked off so they can just pull in and go by the bathrooms up the hill, get their stuff back down. So if you do see people going in there, they're allowed six to eight, they lock everything back to the, big party out there tonight. There is, like fifty cars out there.
Well, they're getting, they're, they're stopped. Thank you. Right, uh, public comment? Hearing none? No need for executive session, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
Motion, meeting adjourned at seven, eleven.